Good evening, everybody. And it is approximately 6:00 PM, March 26th. And we are in for the Laredo College Regular Board Meeting. I please ask if you could please stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Prayer leaded by Ms. Benavides, pledge of allegiance by Judge Martinez.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
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 Would you please follow me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia and Judge Martinez. Item number two, roll call. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, sir. Esteban Rangel.
Present.
Ernestina Tittavela. Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cindy Leendo.
Present.
Erica Benavides Garcia.
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.
Present.
Adriana Alexander.
Present.
Lizzy Newsom.
Present, hi everyone.
Karina Alizondo, absent.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, item number three, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting for February 25th, 2025.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion by Judge Martinez and I have a second by Ms. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, public testimony. Do we have public testimony?
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay, can you go ahead and read the...
Yes. Individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up in person at least 15 minutes before the meeting begins and shall indicate the agenda item or topic on which they wish to address the board. An individual's comments to the board shall not exceed three minutes per meeting. Today, we have Ms. Patricia Barrera. She will be speaking on items 12C and 13C. Ms. Barrera, welcome.
12C and 13C.
Good evening, members of the board and audience. I am Patricia Barrera, your Web County Tax Assessor Collector who collects the LC property taxes.
I've been doing it since 1993 until the present time, with the exception of about three years that I was out. This year's levy is $56.8 million. As of February, we've collected $52.1 million. I would also like to tell you that the next, you're going to be given a handout. The second page gives you the delinquent tax collection. And the total collection of delinquency is $1.6 million that we collected. Of that, the current delinquency was $81,000. And the total altogether was $151 on attorney fees. The total collected was $982 million. On the current, we, on LC, attorneys collected $694 million. We collected $982 million. At one of the meetings that we had, just for those who weren't at that meeting, the impression has been that we have not been collecting, we have been collecting. Your attorneys also collect delinquent taxes, and so does my office. We've never denied a taxpayer to come in and pay taxes. We've always accepted them. Only at the beginning, when the contract was given to them, that they insisted that they go to their office because they needed to fill documents, agreements on their delinquent taxes. But in the past, since then, we've always collected. We've never denied a taxpayer. And there is a discussion of changing the tax code that is being proposed to change. And I'm an elected official. And if you all change to that one, I don't know that I would like to continue collecting. For the simple reason that I would not like to oppress people that are already oppressed economically to continue to be oppressed by additional fees. And right now, the tax code that you all are using, 33.07, only if a person is already delinquent in the prior years and they still are paying those taxes and they become delinquent this February, then you could add them to the prior delinquency lawsuit. With the change that is being considered, you would then begin to start on February, charging them the additional 15% attorney fees. And you're still charging them the PN9, which is 7, 9, 11, 13, 15. And then in June, it's 18%. I know my three minutes are over. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera. We have Ms. Marielena Morales, speaking on agenda item 12C and 13C. Welcome, Ms. Morales.
Yes, I would just, Marielena Morales, Madam, Mr. President. I was used to saying Madam President with Ms. Sepeda. Dr. Ramirez, honorable members of this board. My role there is to be the chief deputy there. And that means that I take care and make sure that the contracts are in order, that everything runs smoothly in the office. And as you can see from the numbers, I think that we're at 90-plus percent of collections with having six more months to go. We have engaged in negotiations with your delinquent tax attorneys. We have not finished those negotiations. And I would urge you to take that into account for any changes. And my impression really is that if it isn't broken, why do you want to fix it? We have a contract that expires in September, August of this year. If you don't want the Tax Assessor Collector to continue, then that is your prerogative. But I think that all you have to do is give us a notice. And I don't see, I think it's premature to try to change the contract with so few months going. And that can be something, in the long run, if you decide that you're going to renew the contract. But not at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera and Ms. Morales. Item five, recognition and introductions by Mr. Ruben Villarreal. I'm going to read them out. 5A, Laredo College Committee and Media Relations Award. 5B, recognitions of Laredo College Police Officers' SWAT School Completion and 5C, introduction of personnel actions.
Good evening, Board President Rangel, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Ramirez, Vice Presidents, faculty, staff and distinguished guests. My name is Ruben Villarreal, Public Information Officer for Laredo College. And it is my privilege to present today's recognitions and introduce new hires and acknowledge employees who were recently promoted. We begin with Agenda Item 5A, Laredo College Community and Media Relations Awards. Laredo College's Community and Media Relations Office recently received five medallion awards at the Region Four National Council for Marketing and Public Relations Conference. Competing with some of the most esteemed and successful marketing and public relations teams from two-year colleges in Texas, Arkansas, Colorado, New Mexico, Oklahoma and Wyoming, our team stood out for their exceptional work. The full list of awards includes a Silver in Radio Advertisement Single or Series, a Bronze in Radio Advertisement Single or Series, Social Media Post or Story, a Bronze, a Bronze for Special Event or Fundraising Campaign, and a Bronze for Television Video Paid Advertisement. The National Council for Marketing and Public Relations is the only organization of its kind that exclusively represents marketing and public relations professionals at community and technical colleges. As one of the fastest-growing affiliates of the American Association of Community Colleges, NCMPR boasts more than 1,600 members from nearly 600 colleges across the United States and Canada. These distinguished accolades recognize the outstanding achievements of the Laredo College CMRO team comprised of Juan Flores, Mayra Garza, Diana Inojosa, Ricardo Limón, Cristiano Campo and Joanna Santiana. Congratulations to the team for their continued efforts to keep our college growing and thriving. Their marketing, public relations, social media and branding expertise has been instrumental in the college's success. And if we can have the CMRO team come up and take the picture, although they're all on the team. So who's going to take the picture? They're part of the photographers. Competing with some of the most esteemed and successful marketing and public relations teams from two-year colleges in Texas, Arkansas, Colorado, New Mexico, Oklahoma, and Wyoming, our team stood out for their exceptional work. The full list of awards includes a silver in radio advertisement, single or series, a bronze in radio advertisement, single or series, social media post or story, a bronze, a bronze for special event or fundraising campaign, and a bronze for television video paid advertisement. The National Council for Marketing and Public Relations is the only organization of its kind that exclusively represents marketing and public relations professionals at community and technical colleges. As one of the fastest-growing affiliates of the American Association of Community Colleges, NCMPR boasts more than sixteen hundred members from nearly six hundred colleges across the United States and Canada. These distinguished accolades recognize the outstanding achievements of the Laredo College CMRO team comprised of Juan Flores, Mayra Garza, Diana Inojosa, Ricardo Limón, Cristiano Campo, and Joanna Santiana. Congratulations to the team for their continued efforts to keep our college growing and thriving. Their marketing, public relations, social media, and branding expertise has been instrumental in the college's success. And if we can have the CMRO team come up and take the picture, although they're all on the team, so who's going to take the picture? They're part of the photographers.
We're going to stand. Right here.
Click. Yeah.
Stand, that's my eye. Okay.
Yeah, he's setting it up. I'll take it up.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We can have the board stay there for the next uh, award. Congratulations to the CMRO team. Next, under agenda item five B, recognition of Laredo College Police Officers SWAT School Completion. Tonight, we are proud to recognize two outstanding members of the Laredo College Police Department for achieving a historic milestone in our institution's history. Sergeant Ramon Salazar and Officer Moses Ostegui have successfully completed the basic SWAT course, making them the first ever SWAT certified officers in the history of Laredo College. This rigorous sixty-hour training program is designed to prepare officers for high-risk situations, including hostage rescues, active shooter response, tac- tactical team movements, and crisis negotiations. Over the course of the training, they engage in intensive physical conditioning, weapons handling, entry tactics, and live scenario-based exercises, equipping them with advanced skills to respond swiftly and effectively in critical situations. This accomplishment was made possible through our partnership with P2 Concepts and we're excited to announce that as part of this collaboration, Laredo College plans to send two officers each year to complete SWAT training. This initiative will further strengthen our department's ability to respond to emergency situations, enhancing the safety and security of our students, employees, and visitors. We extend our sincere congratulations to Sergeant Salazar and Officer Ostegui on this well-deserved recognition. Their commitment to professional development and service to Laredo College is truly commendable. Please join me in celebrating this historic achievement. Congratulations Sergeant Salazar and Officer Ostegui and thank you to our Laredo College Police Department for all they do. Lastly, under agenda item five C, introduction of personnel, personnel actions, I am pleased to introduce the following new hires. Joshua B. Ayala as Patrol Officer, Carolina Cruz, Academic Advisor, Juan D. Sal- Juan D. Saldivar, Truck Driver Instructor at the South Campus, and Larissa Madreal, Coach. Congratulations and welcome to Laredo College. We do have one promotion. He's not here with us though, but we do want to mention congratulations for his promotion. Martín E. Valades, Computer Sciences and Technology Technical Instructor.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time and congratulations once again to all our honorees and we welcome our new hires and congratulate our employee who was promoted.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to bring up nine A.
There's a motion to bring up item nine A. Is there a second? I have a motion by Ms. Leendo. I have a second by Ms. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Nine A, uh, Women's City Club Grant Award, Dr. Ortiz.
Good evening, President Rangel, Board Members, Dr. Ramirez, Administration, Faculty, Staff, and Invited Guests. My name is Dr. Diana Ortiz and I'm the Vice President of Institutional Advancement. This evening, I come before you to share some exciting news about a donor that has been generously affording funding for our students from Laredo College since two thousand and one. In addition to the funding that the Women's City Club has provided our Laredo College, I can tell you that they have continued to afford our Laredo, our students, monies through grants that have been short-term but very, very well-used throughout our um, community. Today, the recommendation is to recognize the Women's City Club with the grant awards from two thou- twenty twenty-five. The recognition for their continuous support, which totals six departments currently receiving funding programs totaling fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Additional funding from the Women- Women's City Club is in place and has support, been supported by college grants and scholarships in the amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the year. Today, the Public Information and TV Productions Department received two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The Environmental Center received four thousand five hundred and ten dollars. The Graphics Design Department received six thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. The Academic Innovation and Technology Department received two thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents. Camilo Prada Child Development Center, ten thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. And the Workforce Scholarship Endowment Fund, that was created, twenty-five thousand dollars. A total of fifty-one thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars for the year twenty twenty-five. But their generous contribution does not just start with this year. Additional funding was spring scholarships in education for ten thousand dollars, a general studies endowment of twenty-five thousand dollars, an early childhood and education endowment of twenty-five thousand dollars, and their original endowment, which supported traditional nursing and an EMT endowment that is at a hundred and four thousand dollars. With that said, the additional support totals two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and seven, and seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. I would like the board, the faculty, the guests to help me recognize the President of the Women's City Club, Ms. Alma Narváez, Ms. Nancy Teanda, Ms. Anna Isabel Álvarez, and Ms. Laura McCoy, all members of the Women's City Club who have been so generously supporting our Laredo College since two thousand and one. Ms. If you would please rise. If I could also have all the departments rise who have been supported. If you would please rise if you have been supported by the Women's City Club.
Can we, can we have them come up so we can take a photograph before they, they, they give a, a little speech? Please, join me?
Please, try to stand in the middle so we can take a picture.
Thank you.
Everyone together, take one step to your right.
You're right. You're right.
Now, three, two, one. One more, three, two. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. If we could go ahead, if, uh, Ms. Narváez, if you would like to go ahead and say a couple of words? Ms. Narváez, would you like to say a couple of words, please?
Hi, good evening. I'm Alma Narváez, Skinkan Narváez, the current president for Women's City Club. As many of you might know, Women's City Cl- Club was established back in nineteen forty-nine. So we just turned seventy-five years and counting.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And actually, here with us, we have one of our active members that she has been with us for forty-five years, which is Nancy Teanda. And still counting. Uh, for, for us, it's a privilege to be able to help the Laredo College and of course, the endowments. To help students, which is our priority. So we are, we are very happy. We help you, you help us, and we work together. Thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Narváez. Anybody would like to say something? Ms. Leendo?
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Alma, um, I can't say enough about how grateful we are for everything that Women's City Club has done for the college. I've had the honor of serving alongside the Women of Women's City Club for a couple of years, many years ago. And I know how hard each and every one of you works every day. This is a group of women that work literally every day to raise money for our community and a hundred percent of the monies that are raised stay in our Laredo community. And nobody is paid. Every single one of the Women of Women's City Club are volunteers. And so, aside from having a fundraiser every month, they meet every week to make sure that those fundraisers are successful and I, anybody would be impressed if you could really see behind the scenes as to what it takes to raise these funds. So, congratulations to you and all the Women of Women's City Club. You really are a, a true blessing for all of our community.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Actually, we're having our golf tournament on May twenty-fourth. We're looking for sponsors. Anyone interested?
Well, we are sponsoring one for Laredo College. But no, I also echoing a couple of words that Ms. Leando is also saying. I have seen you ladies in action for so many years, way back in our years in council as well, you know, the, the work that you all do are, is just remarkable because you're a huge inspiration for young women being able to, to be able to get into your steps, uh, to your shoes and, and take, take the city into another level. So thank you so much for what you do. On behalf of our students, thank you so much because they're the ones that are reaping the benefit from all the hard work that you all do. Thank you so much, Ms. Narváez. Please tell the, the, the club, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, moving on. Item number six, Faculty Senate Report. We have Dr. Gilberto Martinez here.
Good evening, Honorable Trustees, President Ramirez, members of the audience. Also, as they're leaving, I also want to say that you know, the, the Women's City Club, uh, also quietly funds a lot of our theatrical productions all across uh, the city and, and um, they don't, you know, they're often not even recognized, but they're very generous and some of our, uh, you know, fantastic productions are have been put on because of their generosity. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just would like to give a brief, uh, Faculty Senate update. Uh, at our last meeting, um, President Ramirez and our Provost updated our faculty on the legislative session that's happening right now and sometimes those bills don't affect us directly. Most of the time, they affect us indirectly. And, uh, one in particular that could come to fruition uh, is a bill that's been introduced by, uh, Senator Crichton. He's, uh, Senator from Conroe and he, um, introduced a bill that will, um, significantly, I guess, change the way Faculty Senate uh, communicate with, um, I mean, if passed, of course, with, um, not only the college, but the community as well. And so I, you know, we've discussed that. Um, because if the bill does pass, then, you know, many Faculty Senate meetings will now be broadcast, you know, for everyone to see. Not that, we're not doing that already. I mean, everybody, our meetings are open and so forth, but, uh, along the same lines that that is one of the bills that could affect us. Um, one, another bill in particular that, um, might affect us directly is something that we've already been preparing for is the elimination of tenure. Of course, at, uh, Laredo College, a few years ago, our administration, uh, the, the board and the faculty, they were proactive and they took steps to- And they took steps to try to, well, not try, but to have a system for post-tenure review and so forth because that's really what they were asking for two years ago. But now, it might be taken to another, the other step. But with that having said, the Lieutenant Governor still acknowledges that we should have a tiered system of acknowledgement for our faculty. So one way to do that is through our faculty titles, right? And so, most of us are familiar with, you know, the traditional faculty titles, instructor, assistant professor, and so forth. I reached out to my colleague at Austin Community College, Professor Molina, he's a mathematics professor. And Austin Community College is, I think, because they're at the epicenter of everything that's going on, will begin to spearhead some changes before any of us or any of the other colleges do. For example, they still won't get rid of the community in their name. But besides that, they're usually at the forefront of a lot of educational change, right? So one of the things that he explained to me about faculty titles is that they've made a concerted effort to differentiate between the academic and the workforce because of just the difference in what they do. So some of the titles that not all their departments have, but have introduced, for the academic, it remains the same. They have assistant professor, associate professor, full professor, just professor. But in the workforce, they've begun to introduce new titles that more align with the skill set of what those instructors do. So, for example, they have skills instructor. They have the master instructor. And then they have the senior master instructor. And the reason for that is because of the certification some of their faculty have, right? And now, in our climate, sometimes professing isn't enough, right? He explained to me that one of the reasons they made that change was to safeguard and protect the students who graduate from these programs. So, in other words, it does make a nonverbal communicative difference between being trained by a professor or being trained by a certified skills instructor or a master instructor in the given field. And so, they've begun to implement those faculty titles. So that is something that we are going to begin to discuss within our faculty, to see if that is something that, or an avenue we want to pursue. Because their programs and our programs really align similarly at Austin Community College. What we offer, they offer as well. We're just far apart. So that is going to be coming up in the next meeting. And of course, our faculty will get to decide if that's a good idea or not. But Professor Molina did explain to me that this is a trend that we're starting to see ripple down other community colleges, especially now with the elimination of tenure, right? Now, the better way to show your credibility is through what we teach and so forth. And finally, our Faculty Senate elections are coming up next month. We will be voting on the election of a new Faculty Senate President, a new Faculty Senate Secretary, two at-large senators, and then the department senators, there'll be nine, either new senators or senators that are reelected. So by May, we will have a new Faculty Senate Office or a set of officers. That was what we discussed. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I will take them.
Any questions from any board members? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number seven, Laredo College Student Government Association Report. Ms. Bayesteros? Lindsay Bayestero?
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. I'm pleased to provide this month's student body updates. Starting at the beginning of the month, we had Fun Fest. It was an incredible turnout, there were so many people. We had small carnival rides, we had a bunch of booths with organizations and clubs selling food, having games. In the bottom picture, you can see the nursing program. They did a game with fish. The student government did squid games. It was amazing if you guys were there. It was a very good event, it was great. Next, it was the Texas Region Convention for PTK. They did get awarded a five-star chapter plan. It was three members from their PTK organization went. It was the vice president, the public relations officer, and the historian. Next, we had our Safe and Sober Event that took place before we left for spring break. It was fun for students to relax, get ready for spring break that's coming up, to remember to be safe during breaks like this so we can all come back as one. Next, we had St. Patrick's Day at LC. Wearing green is what we do best, right? So that's what we did. Next was Pie Day at LC. The math department and the culinary department, I think they, what is it called? Oh, partnered up. And I know the culinary students, they baked all the pies that were given out that day. And they had like little games for them to play. And they had to do how many words you can come up with pie in the front of it and stuff like that. And they would win like a big pie. But yes. And we also had the block party where it's basically a mini resource fair for students to go and for graduation and for departments that we have on campus and things like lead and to get more information on. And lastly, we had the big event that happened last weekend. It was an amazing turnout with Tamiyo and LC together. It was amazing, there were so many students. It was kind of like Arbor Day, I'm not sure if you guys... Yes, okay, well, it was like that, but like 10 times bigger. And it was amazing and it was super fun, minus the allergies. But everyone had a great time and it was very lovely. But yes, that's all I have for the student body update, thank you.
Any questions from any board members? No comments? I did, I apologize, I did not come to Fun Fest. I had a little family emergency. But I did hear, but I heard a really good comment on the big event. I heard it was attended by a lot of students.
Yes, it was, there were so many students there.
Yeah, so congratulations, great job. Please tell your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez and Ms. Bayesteros for your report. We're moving on to Board Committee Reports. First of all, I want to thank the committee chairs and everybody that attended the committees. And so, we're going to go ahead and start off with item 88, the Program and Policy Committee Report. Ms. Jackie Levin Ramos?
Thank you, sir. So during the Program and Policy Committee Meeting on Monday, we discussed the following policies. It was CAK Local Appropriations and Revenue Sources Investments from TASB Board Policy Update. Documents have been attached to your materials as presented by Mr. Vela. And a resolution will be read upon approval for today's policy item. We also talked about the adoption of amendments to the LC Board of Trustees Operational Procedural Manual. Documents and an outline have been provided and attached to your materials. The committee reviewed and made the proper recommendations as presented to the board during the retreat, the January Retreat. And while we voted in October to adopt the presented procedural manual, we will continue to add information to help our board be more streamlined, efficient, and transparent. And at the request of Mr. Angel, our chair, Mr. Juan Cruz provided our board during the January Retreat some additional items to consider. And they are listed in blue on the items that you have. And the red ones are the items already on the manual. I want to thank my committee, Ms. Vela, Ms. Newsom, and Ms. García for being here and for participating in our committee. It was a long line of agenda. But we were able to have a lot of discussion. We were able to speak about the different items that we were proposing. And I just want to thank you for reviewing and providing input on these items for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. I'm going to go ahead and go with 8B, Student Success Committee Report. Ms. Erica Benavides García.
Yes, we had a Student Success Committee Meeting yesterday, Tuesday at noon. And some of the items that we talked about were the Bachelor of Applied Science and Organizational Leadership. We had presentations made by Dr. Marisa Guerrero, Ms. Amanda Flores del Toro, and also several students, Priscilla, Kathy, and Berenice, they presented their projects. This degree is a 10-month graduation program that started in 2020 with a cohort of 16 students. Currently, we're at Cohort 7 with 32 students. This cohort will begin in August of 2025, and we're still accepting applications from students. The average graduation rate for this program is 88%, with the other 12 dropping for non-academic reasons, usually, you know, life issues. This program prepares our students for technical and global workforce with an emphasis on real-world applications with competency-based, career-focused curriculum with the development of skills in team building, ethical data-driven decision-making, enhanced communication, qualitative research and leadership frameworks, critical thinking, and personal and interpersonal skills. The college has partnered with numerous nonprofit organizations to have our students participate in projects, the experimental learning projects. These projects integrate classroom knowledge and theory with practical application in a professional setting. Presently, the impact of graduating from this program shows 18% of all graduates have gone on to higher education, educational programs such as doctoral programs and master's programs, and 53% have reported measurable impact at their jobs or job searches. Looking to the future for the BAZORAL, how do you say that? BAZORGO? BAZORGO program? They are looking to certify individuals in leadership with a one-semester program, as well as offering an optional study abroad experience to add global perspective. This course, of course, is pending the T H E C B approval. Next, we had enrollment updates presented by Dr. Fred Solis and Ms. Jessica Trevino. The total enrollment as of March 25th, which was yesterday, is 11,004 students. This enrollment reflects a 7.96 percentage increase from the spring of last year. The distribution showed dual credit at 54%, non-dual credit at 41%, and winter semester at 5% of enrollment. We also had an increase of 159 students enrolled in the second weeks only as compared to last year. Students that didn't come in the first eight weeks, they came in the second eight weeks. The continuing education enrollment for quarter three shows us on track with 296 students as of yesterday. Last year, we had a total of 784 students. However, we still have two months to get to those final totals. We also had financial aid update for the spring of 2025. Dispersed total amounts were $8,184,053, with the state and federal funds totaling to $7,543,825, and institutional funds at $640,228,000. We also had authorized totals totaling $4,971,985,000. State and federal funds equaled $4,725,701,000. And institutional funds, which are scholarships and the Palomino pledge, equal to $246,284,000, which is a grand total of money awarded thus far, $13,156,038,000, which is commendable, that's beautiful. Next, we talked about FAFSA, and the applications are now open for '25, '26 using the 2023 tax information. Thus far, we've received 4,255 applications, so kudos to that department. Next, we talked about the commencement ceremony. It will be held on Friday, May the 9th, at the Sains Auto Arena. We have two ceremonies, one in the morning at 9:00 a.m. I mean, I'm sorry, it's at 10:00 a.m. with doors opening at 9:00. And we have an afternoon ceremony at 2:00 p.m. with doors opening at 1:00. In the morning, we have approximately 438 graduates. And in the afternoon, we have approximately 652 graduates, totaling over 1,000 graduates for this, which is excellent. Thereafter, we had a presentation from Dr. Ramirez on the Aspen President's Fellowship. Dr. Ramirez has been invited and selected to the Aspen Institute President's Fellowship Program. The Aspen President's Fellowship is a year-long executive leadership program for 25 community college presidents who want to advance social mobility and talent development in their communities by improving student outcomes. The program's curriculum includes frameworks and case studies reflecting the practices of field exemplars, customized data reports and assessment tools, and structured inquiry with peers and experts. In the end, the fellowship is designed to help fellows better understand their institutions and the success of their students while also developing a bold reform agenda to advance student success. This year, Dr. Ramirez mentioned to us that the dual-credit programming was one of their main focuses. Dr. Ramirez, did you want to give us a little bit on that?
I think you narrowed it down extremely well. I think the goal is to get us to be a 3.0 college. Initially, what was considered a 1.0 college was a college that was interested in access. And we started that many, many years ago as community colleges. And then, we went to access and completion. And we were interested in whether or not people finished. Well, now, the idea is to continue to provide access, assure completion, and then, post-college success. Where are students going and what are they doing after they graduate? And whether the students stay to complete a bachelor's degree here at our college or move on to a four-year institution to complete a four-year degree or a bachelor's degree, the idea is how quickly can we get them to that end? And the metrics are now being looked at in six-year increments. How many graduates did finish in six years? Or attain that gainful employment that is providing the individual with the outcomes that they desired as well? And so, there are numerous additional bills that have been filed in the legislature this session. But in the last session, House Bill 8 mimics a lot of what we're doing and learning and evaluating during the Aspen program. Our pathways to success, which Laredo College started several years ago, is part of the framework of Aspen. And so, we are strongly ahead of the curve. And so, kudos to the team, kudos to the Laredo College academic workforce and student success teams that have been working together collaboratively to make sure that we're attaining not only the access and the completion, but that post-graduation success. Where are they, how do we track them? Where are they going? What are they doing? Not just a year out, but now they're looking at five years after graduation. And so, there's a lot of work to be done. I was doing homework right before the meeting. But there's a lot of work to be done. But we have a strong recognition, only 25 presidents out of 250 were selected across the country. So I'm really honored to be a part of that group. And but I do think that it's because of the success Laredo College has experienced over the years. And so, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And also, I did want to let the audience know that an Aspen school, to be considered an Aspen school is like a blue-ribbon school, you know? Not very many people, I mean, not very many schools are Aspen schools. So it is a great honor. And so, we are very proud of the work that Dr. Ramirez is doing and continues to do, so that maybe one day, Laredo College will be considered an Aspen school.
Ms. Ramos likes to chime in?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I want to tell you a story. Way back when, in 2015...
Way back when, in 2015, I was invited to a meeting of all the presidents, and I participated with Dr. Maguinalden, and I saw all the individuals in the meeting. And I was very impressed because a lot of the people that were there had been to the Aspen Institute. And I was like, where is that and where I wanna go there? And I didn't know it was for presidents, and I didn't know it was for, you know, for up-and-coming presidents and so forth. But I promised myself that I would, you know, hopefully, one day, bring something to the college. Well, it didn't happen like that because we changed presidents, we, you know, we brought in new administration and so forth. But we spoke about it in different circles and different situations. But I aspired to have our community college be a part of that event. And so, now that I think about it, and it's been 10 years going, I'm very proud to be part of a board that supports our president, and not only that, but supports our administration for those of you that would want to participate in something like that. It is a very big accolade. It's a very big accolade to be sitting in a room of individuals who have participated in this type of program. And of course, at that time, I did feel a little bit small, and I felt like I needed to go back to school and maybe get a PhD myself. But I was very impressed with the caliber of individuals, and I'm glad to say we're in that caliber now. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and also, I was privileged to be allowed to sit in the Student Success Committee with Ms. Benavides Garcia, and I also got a little bit of a report on the Aspen. And I do wanna commend the work that you're doing, Dr. Ramirez, and I know it's just not you, it's your whole team, everything that you all are doing. The caliber of having an Aspen, you know, being able to be an Aspen institution, it gives us, first of all, besides just being an Aspen, it comes with a financial impact, you know? So, that's very beneficial for us, right? It gives us that little extra money that we could be able to tag on. But then also, it's a seal of, it's not a seal of approval, but it's just a seal that it allows our kids to go with a diploma sealed by Aspen. And that just helps them if they want to continue their career into going into getting a master's, a doctor's degree. Colleges look at that, and they see that seal, and they know that you come from an institution that's very well-established and knows what they're doing. So, I wanna commend you on that, Dr. Ramirez, and everybody that's putting their two cents into it. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Is that it, Ms. Benavides?
That's it.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, A C, the Building Committee Meeting Report by Ms. Cindy Leando.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. The Building Committee held their meeting on Tuesday, March 25th at 5:30 p.m. Board members present were Cindy Leando, myself, Ms. Adriana Alexander, and our Board President, Esteban Rangel. Mr. Cesar Vela introduced Jennifer Lancaster from Johnson Controls, who told us about a study that was conducted on maintenance items that are in dire need of repair. We currently have 2.4 million in deferred maintenance fund. However, that is not enough to cover all of the repairs needed. And there are things that are very essential to the maintenance and operation of our college. This contract with Johnson Control will help us prioritize the repairs and recommend initiatives that will bring us cost savings on our utility bills. The cost savings will help us recover the cost of the maintenance repairs. The cost of the initial contract is $195,000, and that will be rolled into the project. After listening to all of the information, the committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. Last Committee Report, we have the Finance and Audit Committee Report by Ms. Ernestina Titavella.
Yes, we met last night also, and it was very fruitful. It really was. The financial report was deferred because of spring break and not enough time to prepare. We all understand that. We discussed the submission of a grant totaling for $173,200 for the funding of our LC Police Department. And this is under the Operation Lone Star, and we do have a resolution that will be read by...
Ms. Ramos.
Yeah, go ahead.
No.
You wanna read it now, or do you wanna wait?
When you get to the item.
Okay, all right. Okay, that was one, and that was presented by Mr. Lozano. All right, besides that, we have Cesar Vela submitted a ratification and approval for the purchase of equipment for our Transportation and Technology Department because of a price increase. And we all know that that's happening quite a bit right now. Also involved in that is welding equipment, the realignment of a system equipment, and our diesel mechanic. And, you know, this is something that we all support 100% because it directly affects our children, our students. I should call them children, but they aren't to me. Our students, and this is extremely important to them. Cesar Vela also requested approval for a contract for graduation production services. And these are the people that serve it. Are they, they're in charge of all the lighting and the decorations and everything of our graduation. And everybody knows, I know those of you that have attended graduation, it's really a neat, neat, memorable affair for all of our students, and they all look forward to it. Seven was a report by Albert Chavez, and he requested approval for a purchase of computer equipment. And this computer equipment is going to go in offices and in labs. And, you know, I wish we could sometimes, I wish we could afford to get everybody new computers, but that's impossible because of the cost involved. But I know that we have 273 offices that will be furnished with new computers along with 106 computers that are gonna go into a lab, which again, directly helps our students. Eight was, again, Mr. Chavez requesting approval for an agreement with the team dynamics for IT management services. And this is a service that we get. And we just finished a, we're finishing a three-year term, and we need to renew it for an additional five years in the amount of $21,165.80. This particular amount is in the IT budget, so it's not gonna affect anything else. Next, Mr. Chavez also requested approval for a renewal of an agreement for the identity automation single sign-in. And that is security with our, for our students and for everybody else involved. It's amazing, and, you know, we hear about people hacking stuff, and this is something that will help us tremendously, all right? The last one we have is a resolution. It deals with the grant application by Laredo College to the State of Texas Office of the Governor. And this is going to be for $25,000 that Mr. Lozano presented. And these are for the, to have these. And we've all seen them. There are those little lights that tell people how fast you're going. Oh, you know, which ones around campus, which is obviously very nice to have. And there's, Jackie will read another resolution there on that. And that's pretty much all that we covered.
Thank you, Ms. Vela. That conducts our Committee Reports. We're going on to informational item. Nine B, notification of employee compensation during closure due to environmental weather conditions at Laredo College South on March 4th, 2025, and Laredo College Fort Macintosh on March 17th, 2025, as per Laredo College policy, D, a local compensation and benefits compensation plan. Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is just to advise you all that we had two bad, well, one bad weather day and that involved smoke and high winds. And then we had the fire on the fort, that was at the South Campus, and then at the Fort Macintosh Campus. We had the fire that you all are aware of, everybody's aware of, that happened. And we did release everyone a few hours early. And so, those hours are not going to be made up due to emergencies. And so, we will go ahead and continue to the compensation, regular compensation plan for our employees.
Thank you. Any comments? No? Item nine C, notification of the serving of alcohol beverages by outside entities at Laredo College facility, as per Laredo College Board Policy, G, D, a local community expression and use of college facility conduct on college district premises. Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. As per Laredo College Board Policy, GDA Local, I want to inform you all that there may be a serving of alcohol at the request of the Imaginarium of South Texas for their Heroes Gala scheduled for Thursday, April 24th, 2025, in the Falcon Bank Executive Conference Room of the Geary Library. In addition, the Laredo Theater Guild International will be putting on the production of Fool for Love on March 27th through the 30th and April 3rd through the 6th of 2025 in the Shoebox Theater, or better known as T30. And as per policy, I need to notify you that alcohol may be served at those two events. It won't be sold, but it may be served.
Thank you. Any comments? No?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve 10B, 10C, 10D, 10F, 10G, and 10H on the consent agenda.
There's a motion to approve And there's a motion by Ms. Leando, there's a second by Ms. Benavides. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Ms. Ramos?
Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, I would like to defer to next month's 10A, February 2025, financial report.
There's a motion to defer 10A by Ms. Ramos and a second by Ms. Leando. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10E, Ms. Ramos.
10E is the approval resolution requesting that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the submission of a grant application for a total of $173,200 in grant funding by the Laredo College Grants Office for the 2025-2026 Laredo College Police Department Operation Lone Star Program to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office. And this was put together by Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
Thank you. Resolution?
You want me to read it, or adopt it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I make a motion.
No, there's a motion to adopt item 10E.
I second.
And there's a second, there's a motion by Ms. Ramos, there's a second by Ms. Vela. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay.
Resolution reads as follows. Whereas Laredo College finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Laredo and South Texas, excuse me, that the Laredo College Police Department requests funding under the State of Texas Operation Lone Star for the 25-26 fiscal year. Excuse me. Whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office in the amount of $173,200 to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office for the 2025-2026 Laredo College Police Department Operation Lone Star Program. Funding will be used for a LASO Local Agency Security Officer overtime infringement benefits for LCPD officers working under Operation Lone Star and the purchase of three license plate reader systems. $173,200 for the fiscal year 2025-2026 Operation Lone Star Grant Program, State of Texas E. Grants Application Number 5563801. Whereas Laredo College agrees to provide applicable matching funds when required for the said project, but no matching funds are required for this grant application as noted by the State of Texas Guidelines. Whereas Laredo College agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor funds, Laredo College assures that the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President as the grantee's authorized official, the authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grants on behalf of the application agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application for a total of $173,200 in grant funding by the Laredo College Grants Office for the 2025-2026 Laredo College Police Department Equipment Enhancement Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office, duly resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the 27th day of March, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We move on to item 10I. Ms. Ramos?
Act on the Board Policy, CAK Local Appropriations and Revenue Sources, Investments from Tasby Board Policy Update 48, as presented by Mr. Vela through the Program and Policy Committee Meeting. The documents have been provided for you in the packet, and it calls for the reading of a resolution as well if it is adopted.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos, there's a second by Ms. Vela. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No? Motion passes. Ms. Ramos, resolution?
Resolution of the Board regarding the review of the investment policy, whereas Section 2256.005 E of the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 2256, requires the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District to A, review the district's investment policy and investment strategy set forth in CAK Local, not less than annually, and B, adopt this resolution reflecting the Board's review and recording any changes made to the investment policy or strategies. Apologize. Whereas... I'm sorry. Whereas the district's investment policy for fiscal year 2024-2025 has been presented to the Board for its consideration and approval as required by the Act. And whereas the district's investment policy for fiscal year 2024-2025 includes modifications, number one, modifications to Section 4.4, Authorized Dealers; number two, modifications to Section 6.1, Open Meeting; number three, modifications to Section 6.2, Effective Date. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District has reviewed the district's investment policy and hereby adopts the policy for fiscal year 2024-2025 in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, adopted this 26th day of March, 2025, by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. We move on to item 10J. Ms. Ramos?
Approve a resolution requesting that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office for the 2025-2026 Edward Byrne Memorial Fund, Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, for a total of $25,000 in funding, also put together by Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
Thank you.
That's my motion. My motion is approved.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos, there's a second by Ms. Leando. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Resolution, Ms. Ramos?
Resolution is 10J, whereas a Laredo College finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Laredo and South Texas that the Laredo College Police Department participate in the State of Texas Criminal Justice Program, JAG, Grant Project in fiscal year 2025 through 2026. And whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office in the amount of $25,000 to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office under the 2025-2026 Edward Byrne Memorial Fund, Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, program. The application identifier is State of Texas E. Grants Application Number 5520801. Whereas grant funds will be utilized to purchase traffic safety enforcement equipment for the Laredo College Police Department, including radar equipment, trailers, digital signs, and cloud-based software. These items will augment current speed enforcement and driver safety initiatives underway at Laredo College. Whereas Laredo College agrees to provide applicable matching funds when required for the said project, but no matching funds are required for this grant application as noted by the program guidelines. Whereas Laredo College agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor funds, Laredo College assures that the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez, President, as the grantee's authorized official, the authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grants on behalf of the applicant agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application for a total of $25,000 in grant funding by the Laredo College Grants Office to the State of Texas Office of the Governor Public Safety Office for the 2025-2026 Criminal Justice JAG Grant, duly resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the 25th day of February of 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for reading those resolutions.
Thank you.
We move on to number 11, 11A, Adoption of Amendments to the Laredo College Board of Trustees Operating Procedure based on recommendations presented during the Board Retreat, and I yield to Ms. Ramos.
Mr. Chairman, this is the adoption of the amendments to the Laredo College Board of Trustees Operating Procedures as discussed in the Program and Policy Committee. And I would like to pass the agenda item that we followed at the meeting. If you attended, you will not get a copy.
Okay.
But if you did not attend, I'm going to give you a copy. So I'm going to pass one to Ms. Vela. Ms. Leando gets one also.
And two more.
Let's see. We have Ms. Alexander.
And Mr. Martinez.
Mr. Martinez. Ms. Muzik is with us and Ms. Garcia was with us as well. So you all have your copies already?
For the record, we have Ms. Karina Elizondo present. Thank you.
So based on 11A, we... Oh, let me go ahead and pass one down to her, please. Also as well. So based on this agenda item that we had, we follow this agenda item for the items. The items in red are the newly added amendments to the procedural manual. And the ones in blue, we ask that you please review them also based on the material that was provided in the packet. My motion is to adopt the amendments as presented in the Program and Policy Committee meeting based on the recommendations presented during the Board Retreat and also the Program and Policy Committee meeting. That is my motion to adopt these amendments.
I second the motion.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos. There's a second by Ms. Benavides Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Not... Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
11B, Approval Board Members' Travel and Reimbursement for Reasonable Travel Expenses to Illusion Live 2025 as per Laredo Board, Laredo College Board Policy, BBG Local, Board Members' Compensation and Expenses, and BBH Local, Board Members' Conventions, Conferences, and Workshops. We have Dr. Ramirez on this report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a notification and request. We've been invited again to present at E-Live. And as part of that presentation, E-Live is the company that we use, their software, which is our SaaS, that we just rolled over in December to, that we use for all of finance, all of HR, all of the student information systems. And as part of that presentation, Mr. Rachel is also going to present with me. And so the request is that his travel be reimbursed. I don't know if there's anything else.
Is that... Okay, there's a motion. Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay. There's a motion by Ms. Garcia. There's a second by Ms. Vela. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to executive session. Yeah.
I'm already here.
She's already here.
I read all the rest of the stuff.
Okay, so Ms. Ramos is going to be reading all executive session items.
Thank you. 12A, Initiation of the Annual Board Self-Evaluation Pursuant to Laredo College Board Policy, BCG Local Board Internal Organization, Board Evaluation Including Discussing Evaluation Criteria and Instrument and Setting a Timeline to Conduct the Evaluation, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. 12B, Initiation of the Annual Evaluation of the College President Pursuant to Laredo College Board Policy, BFE Local Chief Executive Officer Evaluation, Including Establishing Goals and Procedures Discussing Evaluation Criteria and Instrument and Setting a Timeline to Conduct the Evaluation, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. 12C, Discussion with Laredo College Attorney to Receive Legal Advice Relating to Laredo College Ad Valorem Tax Collections Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. 12D, Close Session Discussion with a College Attorney Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074, to Receive Legal Advice Concerning a Level III Grievance Filed by Laredo College Non-Exempt Employee as per Board Policy, DGPA Local Personal Management Relations Employee Grievances. 12E, Hearing on Level III Grievance Filed by Laredo College Non-Exempt Employee as per Board Policy, DGPA Local Personal Management Relations Employee Grievances, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074. I make a motion.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos to go to executive session.
Second.
And there's a second by Ms. Leando to go to executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Thank you. Motion passes.
It is 717, sir?
Please, when can do we go out?
Okay, we're missing two.
Can I do the...
Monday.
Can you do these two?
Yes, I'm gonna, but I'm no action and I'm gonna go straight to here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. It is approximately 9:55 PM. There was no action taken on 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, 12E. We are moving on with discussion and possible action on 13A. Approval of the board self-evaluation including discussing evaluation criteria and instrument and setting a timeline to conduct the evaluation. I call on Ms. Ramos.
I make a motion to approve the board self-evaluation including discussing evaluation criteria and instrument as discussed in executive session.
I second.
There is a motion by Ms. Ramos, there's a second by Ms. Leando and Ms. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 13B, approval of the annual evaluation of the college president including goals and procedures, evaluation criteria, instrument and timeline to conduct the evaluation. I call on Ms. Ramos.
I motion to approve the annual evaluation of the college president including the goals and procedures, evaluation criteria and instrument and timeline to conduct the evaluation.
There, there's a motion by Ms. Ramos and there's a second by Ms. Bella. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Thank you. Motion passes. Item 13C, Laredo College at the Lorum Tax Collection, there was no action taken in executive session. Thank you. Item 13D, Level 3 grievance filed by the Laredo College, Laredo College non-accept employee as per Board Policy DGBA Local Personal Management Relations Employee Grievance and I call on upon Judge Martinez.
Excuse me.
Uh, yes, Ms. Elizondo?
I move to grand full relief to Sergeant Juan B. Lugo III. Mr. Lugo has a, well, let me make a mention first. Well, I move to grand full relief to Sergeant Juan B. Lugo III. Mr. Lugo has had a distinguished 21-year career in law enforcement at Laredo College, demonstrating dedication and service to this college, our students, faculty and staff. I think that this case was managed poorly and unprofessionally. I strongly believe that this issue could have been resolved with a suspension rather than terminating him. Termination was an excessive punishment. For 21 years, he has expected to put his life on the line. However, on the first mistake he committed, he was suspended and shortly after terminated with no prior history of misconduct. The severity of this offense doesn't necessarily merit a termination. My call...
Can you just, can we clear up the motion exactly, Ms. Elizondo?
My motion is I move to grand full relief to Sergeant Juan B. Lugo III. May I have a roll call?
There, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. Uh, all in favor? So, I'll start from...
Would you mind repeating the motion again, please, if you don't mind?
I move to grand full relief to Sergeant Juan B. Lugo III.
You moved to what? I'm sorry?
To reinstate Judge.
Reinstate?
So, Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Yes? Judge Martinez?
No.
Uh, Ms. Garcia?
No.
Ms. Leando?
No.
Ms. Uh, Bella?
No.
Ms. Ramos?
No.
I abstain. Motion doesn't pass.
Okay.
Uh, I will allow the judge to make his motion.
My motion is to deny the Level 3 grievance that was filed by Mr. Lugo on the 30th of August of 2024.
There's a motion by the judge?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Ms. Bella. I'll do the same thing roll, roll call. I'll start with myself. I will abstain. Ms. Ramos?
I, I have a motion. I will...
You, you go with the judge, Ms. Leando?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Newsom?
I abstain.
Ms. Elizondo?
Against.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 14, President Remarks and Reports, 14A, Campus Police, Personnel and Travel Report, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the campus police report is in your, is, is in your packets. Uh, and due to time, I, I mentioned earlier that I will be traveling this month to E-Live. Uh, and we also have the Pathways Conference coming up in Houston and several of our employees will be attending that Pathways Conference, which is the foundation of the, of what we're doing as part of Aspen. Uh, in addition, there are, uh, a couple of great things to report. One is that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board has approved our Laredo College proposal for the Bachelor's of Applied Technology in Data Analytics. Uh, it has approved for in-person, hybrid and 100% online. And so, we'll be offering the Bachelor's of Applied Technology, uh, beginning as soon as possible, as soon as we can make sure that we have enough faculty. We are offering some of the classes already uh, that will be feeding into the Bachelor's of Applied Technology and so, um, so we're very excited to report to the board that, that we got final approval. Uh, the funding model for that particular program is a full formula funding. So, so all of our, our students that, that are registered for that will be able to report to the state. Uh, the legislative session, um, I, I've mentioned to you before, we are keeping track and we are staying, uh, in close contact with the Texas Association of Community Colleges, um, and tracking a lot of the bills that would affect us long-term if they're passed. There is a succession bill to House Bill 8, which is our, our, uh, funding model. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're very excited to, to report that as of today, it looks like, uh, both the Senate and the House have full, are accepting the full proposals of the supplemental, um, information that's being adopted or being proposed to be adopted as part of the House Bill 8. Um, so with that, uh, there is an article in the Texas Tribune today that features, uh, Laredo College. I have sent that to all of you trustees for, uh, for your review. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're very excited that we were even asked to participate as part of that article for the Texas Tribune and, and that again is a testament to the work that we're doing here at Laredo College. So, with that, uh, I will, um, end my report.
Thank you so much and congratulations to all the hard work that you did now that we have the goal on the back. Um, 14B, President Remarks. I'm thinking you're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item 15, upcoming events, April 18th to the 21st. It's going to be Easter break here at Laredo College. Item 16, next, next meeting date will be Wednesday, April 30th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. It would be our regular board meeting and I go ahead and I ask for an adjournment. Is there a motion?
Some motion.
There is a motion by Ms. Leando, there's a second by Ms. Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is approximately 10:03 PM.